To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I would like to invite the staff to pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Paul Solano.
June Younger.
Deborah Bullock.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Pam Sprotler.
Rod Wise.
Tanya Spiridan.
Guillermo Serna.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Ron Lapin of South Adams County Fire.
Dean Vitale, South Adams County Fire.
Tony Di Lorenzo, South Adams County Fire.
Jared Draper, City Planning.
Steve Timm, City Planning.
Good evening, Fran Bigelow.
Heather Miller.
John Gallagher, SunCor Energy.
Leisha Burnett, SunCor Energy.
Chuck Sneider, Commerce City Police Department.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Michelle Halsted, Communications.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation, the Dig Safely Month Proclamation. Commerce City joins Governor Hickenlooper in declaring April as Dig Safely Month. With springtime just around the corner and yard projects about to begin, it's important that all residents remember to call 811 before digging on your property. Companies will come to your property and market for underground pipes and cables free of charge, preventing residents from accidentally causing a loss of service, injuries, or expensive damage. More information is available at www.co-811.org. What are the desires of council? Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Mr. McLeDany.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the proclamation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item is also a proclamation. And I would invite the representatives of the fire department to come up while I read the proclamation. Come on up. Whereas the South Adams County Fire Department was formed on February 9, 1942, as an outgrowth from local WWII volunteer civil defense group and became a district in 1952. And whereas the district continues to meet the needs of the communities, it serves from 96 fire calls and 10 volunteers in 1942 to 5,474 calls with 64 volunteers in 2006. And whereas the district expanded its area of responsibility, has Commerce City continued to grow, today protecting 76 square miles of residential, commercial, and industrial open lands, a 66 percent increase from 2000. And whereas the district's Fire Prevention Bureau was established in 1971 to complete fire safety inspections of new and existing buildings, review construction plans for code compliance, and conduct public education classes. And whereas the South Adams County Fire Protection District continues to achieve its mission, protecting life, property, and the environment from fire, disaster, and hazardous materials, related incidents through emergency mitigation, public education, and code enforcement, and to provide advanced life support, medical aid, and rescue with dignity and respect to all citizens and individuals equally. And whereas, the district will celebrate 70 years of accomplishments with a special event on Saturday, April 7, 2012. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and thank South Adams County Fire Protection District and their employees on that anniversary and wish them continued success in the future. What are the desires of the council? Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a proclamation recognizing the South Adams County Fire Department for their 70th anniversary.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carry. Want to join me down here? I would like to make a note about the fire department. I guess yesterday, there was a fire at Alsop elementary. And I was told they were there within three minutes and very minimal damage was done. We have a great fire department. Now I have the public comment session portion of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll allow you three minutes to address the council. Deborah Bullock and June Younger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Deborah Bullock and I live at 6130 Ivanhoe Street.
June Younger, 5409 E 61st Way, Commerce City.
And we're here tonight just to give you an update of what we're doing with the Commerce City Historical Society. As you know, we've been working on a coloring book project and it's done. And we've handed them out on Friday to the kids at School District 14, and they really liked them. Mr. Moreno and Mr. Bullock also helped us do that, and I think they'll probably report on that later. But it was a fun day to go into the schools and give them coloring books and crayons. And what we're going to do from here is we're going to have a coloring contest. All the second grade kids will enter their drawing, or whichever one they like, and they will send it to their teachers, and then we're going to pick them up at the school, and then we'll display them again on May 21. So tonight, we have the art show out in the lobby, and thank you for coming, for those who attended it. And this week is spring break for School District 14, so it's probably why the teachers and the students weren't here. But they will be out in the lobby for two more weeks if you'd like, if anyone comes by to look at them. Then we will also hand out, we're hoping to hand out some coloring books in the Memorial Day Parade, but we're going to have a smaller coloring book that we can hand out. And some of the kids that drew the pictures from the high school are going to walk in the parade with us, if it all works out. So the high school art classes from School District 14 are the ones who drew the pictures in the lobby, and they're the ones that are in the coloring book. So the project was a good project. It was educational for the high school kids because they really didn't know what they were drawing until we went in and told them the history of what their picture was. And then they got it, and they were really excited about it. And the kids, for the second graders, will learn the history of the city, and their parents will probably also learn because they will probably look at the books and read the books. So our hope is to hand them out every year in second grade, and those students will be able to see what the history is of the city. We're also going to have our Gene Klein Angel Awards from time-to-time luncheon on April 29. And I know the city has purchased two tables, and we want to thank you for that. And this year, we are honoring Mr. Leo Younger Jr., Mr. Casey Hayes, and then we have six founding fathers that we're going to be honoring at that event. And we're also going to be at the outreach this summer. We still have our picnic scheduled for September, and our Christmas lights bus tour we're going to be doing in December. And we also are starting to work on a project, and I know the council is aware of it, to try to create Derby as a historic district. And we're starting to work on that project now. So we are going to be bringing a presentation in the near future to you on that. So thank you.
Oh, that was good, Tanya.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And June has coloring books. You already have yours.
Okay, we already have ours, great.
But the audience is going to get them also.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carson?
At all time, I wanted to thank you. I know what kind of work and effort this was, Ms. Bullock. It's a fabulous book, and the thing that I really like about it is when second graders see this, they will get a much-needed understanding that they belong to something much larger than just a school district.
Right.
Or their neighborhood, that they actually have a city. And I think that's where this starts, of building a community, and people around that whole community spirit is drawing them into this. So thank you to the Historical Society for doing this.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your hard work.
When we were handing out coloring books, they were looking at pictures and they were saying, "Oh, I know where that is, I know where that is." So they were relating to the pictures, so.
Mr. Moreno?
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, June. I remember when I heard about this and it was just an idea. And now it's real and it's wonderful. And the kids so appreciated the coloring books, and I think we're going to get back some fabulous colored pictures for the contest. I gave one to my nephew, and in the coloring book, there's a picture of the city council. And he goes, "Which one are you, uncle?" And I said, "Well, the one in my chair has long hair, so I hope that one's not me." But I was commenting to Councilman Bullock. He goes, "I think most of the city council is all girls."
Yeah, they all have ponytails.
But he loved it as well, and I think he's going to learn about, a lot about the history of Commerce City, so thanks, sir.
You did a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for what you do for our community. The history is a big piece of our community, and I thank you for trying to preserve that.
Thank you.
So thanks for coming in this evening.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, thanks, Deborah. Well, now you have a history book for kids as well as adults, so that's a great accomplishment. I appreciate that.
And we're doing 27J this Friday, so if anybody would like to volunteer to deliver coloring books, call me. Thank you.
What time? What time is that going to be on Friday?
We have all different times, 10:00 in the morning, 2:00, 2:30, 2:45. Different ones, so.
I'll contact you, thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you very much. I know that, I'll echo what Councilmember Carson said, that I know there was a lot of hard work and a lot of thought that was put into this book. And so I'm actually excited about coloring a few pages myself. I wonder if we could maybe do a coloring contest with my colleagues here.
A council coloring contest?
I don't know, but yes. You know, it's a fun event. But no, I just want to thank you very much for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Mr. Moreno, do you have something further?
Comment for Councilwoman Elliott. It's on if we're going to have a coloring contest.
Yeah. Okay. Next, I'll call Mr. Paul Solano. Good evening.
Hello, council. My name is Paul Solano. I live at 6751 East 68th Avenue here in Commerce City. My family's been in the area since 1954. We went to District 14 schools. I graduated from Adams City High School, graduated from Metropolitan State College and University of Colorado at Denver. And I'm a recent returnee. I rented property here for Commerce City for many years, but I came back to reestablish myself in the community, moved back into one of my rentals, remodeled it. But the reason I'm here today is, as I was touring the city the other day, I went back by the old high school and noticed that it is really sad to see the situation that the school is in. It's fenced up, it's graffiti, the windows are broken. And as also a past board member of the Adams County Board of Regulators, it's not easy to realize that the property values in that area have really gone down. The area is blighted. It's gone down. And I've done my independent research and found out that the problem is with the school board, and there's a lack of communication with the city council and the school board. What I'm here to ask today is what is the progression with the school board, and what is holding back this communication that we cannot get this school board developed?
Mr. Bullock.
That, I'm on the school board facility review team, and that school site is strictly a school board site. I mean, we have no say-so in anything they can do with it until it's done, and then either the zoning or the nature of the property changes. As long as the school's there, what they're trying to do now is sell the property, have it demolished, and have either, either have somebody pay to do it and they keep the property and sell it as a whole, or sell the whole project as a whole. And we get reviews from their team on this facility review board, but until we get the word that, we don't have a say-so in it. We can go by and tell them about the graffiti and have it taken off and things like that, but basically, it would be just like if it was your property, we can't tell you what to do with your property. We can tell you to keep it cleaned and things like that, but we can't, if they don't want to come to us, we can't make them.
Okay.
And so, but there is some movement in there, and I don't know if somebody's coming forward to try to buy the site or not, but I've heard there's been some interest in looking at it. So I can go talk to a person over at the school board and have an update, and if you come back next week, I'll probably have more information for you.
I appreciate that. My concern is, there should be a liaison between city council government and the school board government, where we could get a line of communication going to speed this up. You know, and I will, on that note, normally, there is a school board member with us in our council meetings on a regular basis, and I feel that we do have a real good relationship with the school district, with the school board. Matter of fact, several of them were here this evening to, on the coloring book event that took place out in the hallway, and I got to talk to them. But we do have a great relationship, and myself and Mr. Bullock, recently, were talking to a business owner here in Commerce City that had an interest, and we took that information over to the school district that same day. So I think we are working together. But Mr. Bullock's right, they do own it, they're trying to sell it at this time. The city would like to see nothing more than to have that site redeveloped and improve our opportunities for a commercial component on the front side of there that will help generate revenue, that will help improve that neighborhood. Thank you. So we're on, we're on board with that. So wherever, wherever you got the notion that we didn't have a good relationship, I can tell you, we do have a good relationship. We're constantly pursuing that. And we are hosting a meeting with City Council of Brighton and the School District 27J and School District 14. I believe it's, is it this month or next month, Mr. City Manager?
Next month, on Tuesday.
May? No, no, this is the one with the two school districts and Brighton. The quarterly meeting.
I'll have to check and see.
Last Tuesday of May, Mr. Bullock's telling me. So we are, you know, constantly getting together. We did go over and have a meet and greet with the new school board, once the, once the city council was seated and the school board was seated. But this council, I know, would like to see nothing more than that property be redeveloped. As you know, being with the Board of Regulators, that it's tough economic times, and I know the school district doesn't want to sell it for a little of nothing because that has an impact on their funds for what they can do for the kids. So they're trying to, trying to balance it. But we've talked to them several times. I think they have it priced very, very well right now, and I do know there is some interest. So hopefully, you can see some changes in there in the near future. And I would ask that we have staff go over and take a look, see if there's something we need to get with the school district on to clean up some graffiti or anything that may be out of place that is within our powers. Okay, I appreciate that. I'll be back. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, council. Mr. Moreno would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Solano, for coming to talk to us about this issue. I'll agree that it's extremely frustrating that that property has sat vacant for so long. On this council, you have four council members that all attended school there, and I think there's no doubt on the effect that that vacant property has had on the surrounding community. I would suggest that even though the city council doesn't own the property and has little influence otherwise, other than when someone buys the property and then chooses to do something with it, I'd suggest that the city look at doing some outreach in the neighborhood to try to figure out what the residents in that area would like to see. Much like we did at the dog track, that was a somewhat different situation because the city has actual ownership stake in the dog track. But I would be curious to see what the residents really would want to see that property become. And I think from a city aspect, we would be able to do that, and we'd be within our purview of doing that because we're conversing with our residents. So I agree, and I appreciate you bringing attention to the issue, and thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Benson?
You know, I seem to recall several times in the past, somebody suggested that we appoint some sort of liaison between the city and School District 14, maybe 27J also. I don't know where that's gone. We never have gone forward with it. But apparently, there's, the school district has appointed somebody to come here as their liaison with us, and why don't we have something like that?
I think, I don't think it's a bad idea.
It's been brought up several times, but it just kind of dies. I don't.
But I would certainly volunteer for that.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll take that under consideration. Okay. Thank you for coming in this evening. Rod Wise. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tanya Spiridan, live at 5956 Poplar Street. We're actually on the list to be, I think, next for the rezoning.
Okay, well, if you're here for the rezoning for the public hearing.
Yeah.
Then we'll take your comments at that time, so you're okay. And I'll scratch off and go to the next person.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. I'm going to really destroy this first name. I can't hardly read it here. Yusha Burnett?
Lisa.
Lisa. Oh, it looks like a U. Leisha. Good evening.
Hi there. Hi there. Leisha Burnett with SunCor Energy. We're at 5801 Brighton Boulevard in Commerce City, and I'm here representing SunCor tonight. I've got John Gallagher, our vice president of refining here as well. We just wanted to give an update on an item that was announced today related to a regulation. If that's okay?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city staff, we, there was a press release today that I wanted to update you on, and then offer you an opportunity to ask questions if you cared to. Essentially, SunCor Energy was fined $2.2 million associated with an audit, an air audit that took place in 2010. And the actual problem that was uncovered in 2010 started when we amalgamated the facilities from Conoco and Valero, the previous owners. And what occurred there was, the regulation that was subject of this fine was not applying to Conoco assets, nor was it applying to Valero assets because of the level of the emissions of the plants. And when they, we combined them under one SunCor refinery, we then exceeded the threshold on emissions, so automatically, this regulation came into effect. We did not do a good job and essentially didn't really understand exactly what was required because we hadn't been subject to it before, and we did not put the program in place that we should have. So this fine relates to a long period of time, from 2005 up until 2010, when it was uncovered. I do want you to know that, once it was uncovered in mid-2010, we took immediate and drastic action to try and comply with the regulations that we were not complying with. A large part of it was about monitoring the program, record-keeping. It wasn't so much about emissions, it was more about the administrative side of it. So we have agreed with CDPHE on this fine, and, you know, we, just to make sure I've covered off. So, you know, we are looking at having full compliance by next year. There's a couple of capital projects that are in the several million dollar range that we're working on. We've already started engineering, and they will be completed next year. Now, probably, I don't know if there's any good news about being fined $2.2 million, but one of the things is that $1.2 million of this fine is eligible for SEPS, which is Supplemental Environmental Programs, which are environmental projects that can be done in the community, and that's all approved, and people have to apply for that through the CDPHE. So I just wanted you to know that the situation, get a good understanding of it, and if you have any questions, I'd certainly entertain them.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in, first of all. Mr. Benson, did you have something? Your light's on.
No, it didn't go off after the last time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Moreno?
Thanks for the update, John and Leisha. I know you're shooting for compliance by next year. Was there a date that, for final compliance, that was given by CDPHE?
There wasn't exactly, but it's mid-year. I don't know if it's July or August, I'm just not 100% sure right now.
Of next year?
Of next year, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, this is actually a question for maybe you or for staff. Would Commerce City be able to apply for some of that SEP funding that you mentioned?
Yeah, so just to clarify that, what John said was right. The Supplemental Environmental Projects is a program that is run, developed, managed by the Department of Public Health and Environment. You may know that SunCor has been a past participant in the SEP program, and we highly endorse it. We've actually been working with CDPHE to help them tweak their program so that we can always ensure, or so that CDPHE can always ensure that their quality and sort of ready approved projects in their queue for organizations, not just SunCor, but other organizations, companies out there that could potentially have a penalty that is eligible for a SEP fund, SEP funding for a project. So certainly, I think if there are opportunities out there that the city has that would meet the parameters, meet the guidelines, meet the specifications, I know, I can put people in touch with the right people at CDPHE. Again, we've been working with them to actually sort of help them revamp their sort of process and protocols for ensuring that there's good projects in the queue that, so those organizations that want to do a project know that there's funding ready.
Great, thanks for that clarification, and I just ask that city staff explore that possibility.
Mr. McReel?
We actually met with representatives from the state who managed this program last fall, and we've been looking at developing a list of projects that we think would meet the eligibility standards of that program.
Thank you.
And just to further clarify, sorry, now that you mentioned that, the state is actually going to be rolling out the new program or the new sort of guidelines and procedures that we've been working with.
procedures that we've been working with them on, I think tomorrow. So, once I kind of have that announcement, or how they're going to be getting that information out, I'll make sure that you all know about it, so that we can help the city, help whoever, you know, with the application process.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Lisa and John. Had a question on the cleanup. How's that going with the cleanup?
You asking about Sand Creek?
Yeah, about the cleanup?
Yeah, I'm gonna let John take the specifics, but I did want to point out that, just, just for clarification purposes, the, the fines that were announced today by CDPHD related to the federal air emissions that we were non-compliant with, for the dates that John spoke of, is a separate issue from the issues that we've been managing at Sand Creek. The issue with the fines related to the federal air emissions, as it relates to benzene and waste and wastewater streams, is specific to the refining operations. So, it is, it is separate. We are managing that to the best of our ability with the media, so just wanted you to be aware.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I would add also that, in terms of Sand Creek, we were under orders through the CDPHD to conduct certain items to be completed by certain times. We had over 80 action items from that. We have completed virtually all of those, and, in, in time or ahead of time. So we're, we're really quite proud of the effort that we put into that. What we've done at this point in time is, if you remember, when the spill first occurred, we, we put in a sandbag dam to immediately stop any oil from going into the creek. There was a small amount that did get in before it was discovered. And then, from that, we dug a trench, a 300-foot trench system, to collect any material, and that was, actually proved to be quite successful. And then we had to build a 1,000-foot trench system on Metro Wastewater's property, and in addition to that, put a 2,100-foot trench system on our own property to contain. So, the, if you think about it, we're essentially keeping material out of the creek, then collecting it before it got there, then moving up the hill and, and blocking it further and collecting it. And eventually, as, you know, within a couple of years, we should have everything contained on our own property, and then our plan would be then not to have anything leave our property into the future. So, it's quite extensive system that we've, we've installed there. It's been very effective. For example, we collected about 600 barrels of material at the initial collector trench, and we feel like there was much less than a barrel of material that actually got to Sand Creek. And, so now we started to collect material on the Metro Wastewater trench, and we're just finishing up the trench on our property. So, it's been a lot of effort, a lot of, a lot of money spent to get us where we are, and, you know, we think eventually that everything will be back in order. You know, we still have trace levels of benzene in the groundwater that's entering the creek, parts per billion levels of material, and we are working both actively in the creek today, through aeration methods, through spray systems, and eventually, we will be treating, we've already started treating the ground at the, at the Metro Wastewater trench, in our own trench. So, we'll be putting in soil vapor recovery systems, and also air sparging systems to eliminate the benzene going to Sand Creek.
Has there been any, any going efforts as far as the employees' health? Have they, I know someone had been tested. I talked to a few of them.
This is, this is related to another problem. Gee, we've got too many problems here. This is related to the drinking water problem on our site, and there were, as a precaution, we sent pretty much all of our employees and all of our contractors for blood testing. We did that because we felt it was important that, you know, people didn't have to worry that they would understand what had occurred there. I don't have the specifics of the blood testing, but I can tell you that we're very pleased that, you know, the numbers of people showing benzene contamination are, are, there aren't any, essentially. And the levels that people would have been exposed to were very low to begin with, and we, we have it through some experts, that that level would not be a problem for people. However, I would say that our employees deserve better drinking water than they received on that day, and, and we've decided to go with bottled water for the foreseeable future. We're probably not going to go off of that.
Okay. Thanks for being proactive, and thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Councilman Teeter?
Thank you, Lisha and John. This question's for Lisha. Just getting back to the, to the cleanup money, could that money be possibly used for Superfund sites?
So, again, it goes back to the specific parameters that, that CDPHD sets for SEPs, and it's, it's really a matter about what the project is about. So at a very high level, I'm not an expert, you know, on their program parameters, because it covers lots of areas. It can be more on the environmental side, it can be more for public health, it can be broader energy usage. I mean, you can certainly go out to their website and see examples. There's certainly great examples of projects that we have done in the past, when we've participated and, and done a SEP project. What I would say about the project, the program as a whole, is that when we have done project, what has made the project successful is that there's buy-in on many parties. There's a buy-in on the party of the organization that had the penalty or had the fine, that's wanting there to be a good outcome. There's the project owner that's saying, "This is a good project. We feel it meets the parameters. It's been accepted and approved by CDPHD and by the organization, whether Suncor or another company." And then CDPHD has, has ownership in it too. So there's this great triangle of sort of ownership and commitment around the project to make it successful. But there are many examples of the types of projects. Again, it can certainly have an environmental focus, but it doesn't necessarily have to.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moreno?
Lisha, perhaps you could answer this question as well. You said that this was a result of the 2010 air audit?
That's right.
Do you, are you familiar with how often those audits occur?
Yeah, the audit with CDPHD, our annual air audit, is, is yearly. And this particular audit in 2010, as John described, each year when they audit us, they can focus in on a particular area or particular regulation, and in this particular year, it was time to, to audit us on the, the federal air emissions related to benzene in our wastewater that came up, which is our B1 and QQQ. And so that's what they were auditing us on.
Thank you. And just want to say, I really do appreciate the, the constant communication that Suncor maintains with, with the city council. This is for staff. I would ask maybe if we could explore having a representative from CDPHD come talk to us in a study session format. These items aren't subject to city regulation at all, but I think it'd be helpful to, to know a little bit more about the process.
You talking about the SEP projects?
Yeah, the SEP projects, as well as just generally
Sure.
what they do.
And there's some great examples. I was just gonna say, you know, one of the examples that I can just call to mind right now is a project that we did with an organization, a nonprofit organization, that actually did some work in Commerce City. So the net, net effect was that there was a benefit to Commerce City. The organization that was doing the work, it was on energy efficiency in homes in neighborhoods in Commerce City, and so we were able to fund that work. And that organization goes into homes and audits their homes to see if they're, you know, see if they're being energy efficient on a number of different methods, whether it be insulation, or windows, or their appliances, and does an audit for them to make sure they're, one, aware of energy efficiency, and, and two, to help them do the work if, if it's needed in the home. So I do know that there's been a project in the past that was funded through a SEP project, through the SEP program, that had an, you know, had a specific benefit to Commerce City neighborhoods and families.
Great.
You know, first of all, I'd like to thank you both for coming in, and I agree with the Mayor Protem, that it's great that we have such a close relationship, and you guys are always here letting us know what's going on, so that we're in the loop. First question I have for you is, have you in the past had any of these violations of, of the benzene-level air monitoring issues? And after reading your email that I received today, with the two plants merging, and, and how that worked out, I just, I just want the residents to know, has this been a problem in the past?
So for, I'll, I'll take a stab, and John, you can chime in. So for the specific right, regulation that we, that CDPHD announced today, that we were audited in 2010 and received the penalty for, as John said, the, the plants were not subject to this regulation until 2005. And so in 2005, when we integrated the facilities, all the facilities, into one single refining facility under Suncor's banner, the regulation did apply. We did a poor job developing, executing, and implementing the right kind of compliance program to deal with all the details. It's a very specialized set of rules and regulations under the B1 and QQQ rule. It's very specialized, so we just did a poor job of developing and implementing an appropriate compliance program to ensure that we were looking after things. What I would say is, as John mentioned, in 2010, when we realized that we had a gap in the compliance program that we had, it wasn't looking after all the details of this very specialized rule, we, you know, immediately started driving towards, you know, corrective action, and driving towards coming into full compliance, including bringing on resources and, and working with people who have specific expertise in, in this very specialized rule.
And I would just add that, in terms of fines for this specific regulation, we have never had, in Suncor's ownership period, fine associated with this regulation.
Okay. Most importantly, is the safety of our residents, and we want to make sure you get into compliance. I have faith that you will, and, and, you know, with the past experience working with Suncor, you have been very diligent in taking care of your problems. So I just want to make it a point to say that, that we look forward to you being in compliance, so that our residents don't have to worry about anything that's going on over at the refinery. We do appreciate the constant updates, though.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I guess I would just add, in terms of, in terms of the, the safety and the security of the community, you know, Suncor's committed to that. These fines are mostly related to administrative issues and not emission issues. You know, we've got to get that right. But, you know, we put a lot of effort into the safety, security, and the community relations to us is really important, and take it very seriously.
I know you do. Thank you for mentioning that, though. That's what I wanted you to do. I wanted, I wanted everybody to hear you say it, and we want to make sure that we continue our relationship and, and make sure that Suncor's a safe place in our community. So thanks for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance Z-899-12. Is staff ready to make the presentation?
I would like to introduce City Planner Jared Draper.
Thank you.
Like you said, my name is Jared Draper. I'm a city planner here with Commerce City. This is my first presentation in front of council. Hopefully, it's the first of many. And so with that said, I'm here to present case number Z-899-12 for 5956 Poplar Street. The applicant is Tanya Spiriden, and the request is to rezone from C3 to R1. As I said, the, the property is currently zoned C3. It is just south of 60th Avenue, with the back of the property against the commercial strip along Quebec. The other adjacent properties along Poplar Street are also zoned residentially. The comprehensive plan that's adopted by the city was, actually calls this area out to be residential in nature, along with that commercial strip along Quebec. There has been previous effort by the city to rezone properties that are non-conforming to be residential. In 1980, there was a case that took multiple, multiple properties before council to rezone them to residential. However, that property, that case was withdrawn due to the request by council. One of those properties in the 1980 case was 5956 Poplar Street. Since the 19, since 1980, there have been subsequent efforts by individual property owners to rezone their property from the commercial or non-conforming zone district to a residential zone district. This application came to staff's attention through a building permit. The applicant desired to have an addition on the house to meet the needs of a growing family. Upon reviewing the building permit, staff informed the applicant that he needed to rezone the property in order to create, to build the addition, and then the applicant took the appropriate action and started the rezoning process. Here you can see the site plan with a new addition just to the north of the existing Through the Planning Commission's analysis, it was seen that the rezoning of this property would bring it into a conforming status with the comprehensive plan, that it would be compatible with the adjacent uses of residential along Poplar Street, and that it are, it currently meets the R1 bulk standards, and so there would not be any variances necessary. Furthermore, the rezoning of this property from C3 to R1 would make it legal and conforming, which would match the zoning which, with what it's currently being used for, which is a single-family home, that it would allow for the addition to meet the need of the applicant, that, again, it would be legal and conforming, and that there would, there would be the ability to sell and refinance as a single-family home. This case was reviewed against the rezoning approval criteria by both staff and Planning Commission, and on March 6, the Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to forward this request with a favorable recommendation to city council. That concludes staff's presentation, and at this time, staff will take any questions council has.
Are there any questions for staff from the council? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Draper, I had a question actually about the, the case history, as, and it seems like there has been an effort by the city to proactively inform residents of their zoning designation, and then to encourage them to, to conform with the use of the property. But there are a couple of holes still in that. Do we plan to, at any time in the future, again, proactively contact the residents to, to bring them into compliance?
Mr. McRae?
That's a very good question. Are you speaking about this particular area, or non-conforming properties in general throughout the community?
A little bit of both, actually. I think many residents, frankly, if, if they don't conform with the zoning currently, aren't aware of that. So, I think it could be an effort by this city to inform them of their current zoning designation, and then, you know, most residents find out their zoning regulation by, by wanting to make an addition, much as the current applicants today are, also found out, I think, the, the non-conformance of their designation. So, I just think that there could be a unique opportunity for this city to, to talk to residents about the zoning issues, and then to get them to proactively come and, and change their zoning designation.
I'm not aware of any current program like that within the city, but what I'd like to do is, is perhaps make that a council action item, and let us take a look at that.
I'd be interested, yeah, in, in bringing it back for a study session item.
Okay. Seeing no one else, the applicant is present. Is there anything you'd like to add to this public hearing? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only concerning this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'm gonna Seeing no one, I'm going to wait. Yes, sir.
Ask the two people there. Tell them it's their time to speak now if they'd like to speak.
Gotcha. Councilman Bullock just wanted me to let the applicant know that this is your time to speak if you have anything additional to add. And, and you, you said you did not. I just want to double-check, make sure you don't have anything to add.
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McAldonny, you have something to add?
I was prepared to make a motion regarding the...
Okay, let me close the public hearing first, and then we'll get to that point. Public hearing is now closed. What is the council's desire on the findings and recommendations of the planning commission? Mr. McAldonny?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve or accept the findings of the planning commission on this matter?
Mr. Benson?
Second that motion.
Motion is second to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, what are the desires concerning the ordinance or the zoning change? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve Z-899-12.
Thank you. Mr. McAldonny?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Rezoning from C3 to R1 Zone District. The property described in Exhibit A attached hereto made a part hereof, located at 5956 Poplar Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map to the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Oh, the people that were late. Let the record show that the motion is approved. All in favor. Ms. Moreno?
I just wanted to wish the applicant's luck on your remodel. And, Mr. Wise, that was a great site plan you put together. Perhaps you can, you should consider doing that in your free time, putting together site plans.
Next item on the agenda is resolution, Resolution 2012-11. Council will recall that this resolution was discussed as a study session item last week. Are there any questions? And I am open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution 2012-11. Council is seated.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
My motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify. Title, Mr. Attorney?
Title reads, "Resolution Approving Northeast Greenway Corridor Advisory Committee Comprehensive Plan for Allocating Funds from Rocky Mountain Arsenal Natural Resource Damages Settlement."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item, Resolution 2012-12. Does the council have any questions for staff regarding this resolution? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAldonny?
Would move to approve Resolution 2012, or, dash 12?
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion concerning the resolution? Mr. Moreno?
One question for staff on this resolution. Seeing that this agreement only applies to East 72nd between Colorado Boulevard and Highway 85, I would just suggest that we also contact Adams County about the deteriorating condition of Dalia just north of that. It's in pretty bad shape, and I know it's in the county, but we have an agreement here on this section of the road that's just south. Perhaps we should engage in conversations with the county about that area as well, because it is getting pretty bad.
Okay, thank you. Be no further discussion. Read the title, Mr. Attorney?
Title reads, "Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement Between Adams County, Colorado and the City of Commerce City Regarding the City's 2012 Pavement Rehabilitation Plan."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2012-13. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution 2012-13.
Mr. McAldonny?
Second the motion.
My motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moreno?
For staff or Mr. Clemens, do we have a, when do we anticipate that, I know this is entering into the agreement with Adams County, but when do we anticipate that these improvements should be completed?
Thank you. Both of them will be done by the summer, by the end of the summer.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, Mr. Attorney, want to read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement Between Adams County, Colorado and the City of Commerce City Regarding the County's 2012 Pavement Rehabilitation Plan."
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business. And I understand there's a need for us to convene an executive session on April 9. Since the council has previously voted to hold executive sessions at 5:30 PM, we now must vote to change the start time of the April 9 regular meeting from 6:30 to 5:30. Mr. McAldonny?
Would move to approve, move, move the start time to 5:30 that evening to accommodate the executive session?
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Second.
My motion is second to adjust that start time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Is there any additional administrative business? Mr. McAldonny?
Would now be a good time to bring forward the item from earlier this evening?
That'll be fine.
I would move to direct Mr. Gayler to begin drafting an agreement for presentation to Mr. McBroom to tender, or to outline terms of employment as the city's new city manager, and then seek to have that draft put before council, brought before council next Monday evening for our input and consideration. Any other points that I missed on that from our...
I think you covered it. Mr. Benson?
Well, I had some other matters. I certainly agree with what Mr. McAldonny said.
Do you want to second that, then?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to direct the city attorney to start drafting a contract to be presented to Mr. McBroom to consider full-time employment as the regular city manager of the City of Commerce City. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I do have another administrative council item. Mr. Benson has let me know that he would like to pay his own way to go to the International Conference of Shopping Centers and represent the citizens of Commerce City. And because there, the way the motion was last week, or the week prior, I believe, to only send one representative, since he's paying his own way, I need to ask the council their direction to allow him to either participate in those meetings or to not be allowed to participate in those meetings. Mr. Bullock?
I would suggest that seeing how the council made a motion and a determination to send one person, the mayor, to these meetings, it would be the mayor's view to go to these meetings and come back and report to the city council that if he, in his own determination, said he would need two people in the future, we would look at that then. But this year, that send only the mayor to these meetings, because that was the direction of city council. And I think that's just the way that we, that was our direction. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Well, my button was pushed for a couple of other things.
Okay, let me finish the discussion on this item, then. Did you have anything to add?
I'm sorry.
Did you have anything to add to this discussion?
No, I, I thought that the reason that we were only going to send one person was because of the cost to the city, that seemed to be. And I thought I could help in that matter by just paying my own way, which is no problem.
Well, and the motion that was given was unclear. That's why I'm bringing it before council. Mr. Bullock moved to send a second council person along with the mayor. It was seconded by Mr. Douglas. It does not talk about reason. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Right.
Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with Mr. Benson. He's paying his own way. I was for having an additional person go, an additional council person represent the city as well. I mean, this is a very timing situation, being that we have a lot of open space for retail, and to have someone else represent the city, I think that's just fine, especially if Mr. Benson put it out there that he's, he is paying out of his own pocket to attend this conference. And then the way we voted on it, you know, I mean, it wasn't all the way that, we didn't want to represent, extra representation from this, from the council. So I don't have any problem with Jim going there and working with the staff and working with the mayor, because we did not specify that at the time we were voting. Thanks.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Is this three main meetings now that we're going to discuss this, this item? This is getting ridiculous. Council put a directive forward. I take it people didn't like that directive, so then we rehash it, and we rehash it. My understanding, I did miss the second meeting. The first meeting was that we would send one representative. It wasn't, I don't know if we really talked the budget. We did talk that a few of us have, I've not been there myself, have spoken with others that have been there. It was their belief that one representative was sufficient. Not the dollar amount, but it was what did the city need for representation. The second one was discussed. I watched it at home. I thought it was very clear that council said one representative. I think you're treading into a territory when we step aside what council's directive is just because we say we're going to start paying out of our own pockets to start attending things. Why bring those decisions in front of council, then? I guess if you could afford it, go anywhere you want to go. It was a direction by council. It's the third meeting we're discussing it. It's getting old.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Although I think cost was a concern in this issue, I don't think it was the sole intent of the city council. I do feel that the proposal is, in a, in a sense, circumventing what the city council had decided. And that's that what Ms. Carson said was, one representative was sufficient. So I don't think we should be, I think it's, like, Councilwoman Carson says, it sets a dangerous precedent. And I don't think we should be going that route.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
During the second, during the first meeting, I was absent. During the second meeting, Ms. Carson was absent. I lobbied long and hard for two people to go, and the decision of council was one person. I think council has to get it in our heads that after we make a decision, if you don't like the decision that council makes, you don't circumvent or undermine council. When we make a decision, let's stick with our decisions. And if we're going to say that, okay, I didn't like the vote, I will do it my way anyway, then we aren't working as a unified council. Now, this council voted to send one person. I just suggested that if that one person goes and says that it was overwhelming for him, in the future, we will send two. But until he comes back and gives us a report, I think that council should stick with the decision council makes, whether you like them or not. The decisions of council is council. And I was in the minority on the vote, but I accepted it and walked out of room, and I love you all still. Now, I think everybody else should accept it and walk out of the room and love us all still.
Okay. Seeing no one further, I don't disagree with that, Mr. Bullock. And, and I had to bring this back to the council just because it is a different item. He is, he has offered to pay his own way. And with that being said, I don't have a problem with him going out there. I do have a problem with him representing the city if that is not the desire of this council. And that is the clarification I came back to get. Mr. Benson, do you have something to add?
Not to that issue.
Okay, we're still, just give me a second. Let's finish this issue, and then we'll move on. So I'd like to ask the council to make a motion and a second to give direction so that Mr. Benson does not, or does, make reservations for this trip. Mr. Bullock?
I'd like for the council to give direction for the only person that will be attending and representing Commerce City at the ICSC meetings will be our mayor, Mr. Sean Ford.
Okay. Is there a second?
And staff?
Yeah. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
My motion and a second, that I will be the only representative attending that conference. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, Mr. Benson, what item did you want to bring up during administrative council business?
I've got about three items. Do you think we have time for all of them, or should I put it?
Start laying them out.
One a week, or whatever.
No, put them out.
Okay. Yesterday, I went to a, a presentation, you might call it, over at the Bison Grill about an event that's going to benefit the cancer research. And it's an event that'll occur at Prairie View High School on July 28. It's about an 18-hour event. It'll be going on at the football stadium, where there will be teams, people will spend the night out there. There'll be people on the track from each team for 12 hours. You can either run or walk, whatever you want to do. And I gave Mr. Cordero some information on that yesterday. I would just like to have the staff look into that and find out if this is something that the city wants to get into and sponsor, be some kind of a sponsor for it. I think that they've contacted Mr. Moreno, too, didn't they, Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, they did invite me to that event. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it. But it sounds like a, a great event, and if the city can sponsor in some way, I think we should explore that.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second to give direction to staff to look into it and bring back the information necessary for us to consider participation?
Well, I wouldn't move that.
Mr. Moreno?
Move to direct city staff to explore partnerships with the, is it the American Cancer Society, Mr. Benson?
I'm sorry?
Is it the American Cancer Society Marathon?
I'm not sure that it's American Cancer Society. Mr. Cordero, does that flyer that I gave you say anything about the American Cancer Society?
I don't have it.
You don't have it?
I don't have it on me right now.
Okay. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it is American Cancer Society. It's just cancer research.
I would just move to, for the city to explore partnership opportunities.
Mr. Benson, did you want to second that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to ask staff to explore this event. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next one, Mr. Benson?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Cerna for last week bringing up that article that was in the Post, I think on March 25, written by Tina Grealio. I want to point out that that was, that was not an article that was authored by CDOT or anybody on behalf of CDOT. She's just a newspaper reporter. I think she had called some people at CDOT. But there is nothing going on at CDOT that suggests that they're going to open up all of those discussions about the I-70 realignment. And if there was, I would hear about it at the State Transportation Advisory Committee. And I just don't think it's going to happen. Have you, Mr. McBroom, have you received a reply to your letter yet? Because I understand that they have, there's a... Because I understand that they have, there's a draft on somebody's desk maybe to send that to you.
We have not received one yet.
Okay. I think you should count on doing that. And also, they're going to be holding a series of meetings with the stakeholders. They'll have one here within about the next month to go over that finalized plan. But the only thing that's on the board right now, as far as I know, is that they're going to move the line of I-70 maybe 150 feet to the north, which is going to eliminate that elementary school in there. Of course, they'll build a new elementary school. But the proposal to put that big lump up through Commerce City, it's just not being considered. I don't know where Ms. Griegego came up with the idea to write that article, but it really has no factual basis. It's just people that have been living under that viaduct for 50 years that don't like it, and so now they want to put that, put a bulldozer through our city and create a new road. I don't think that's going to happen. If I hear anything about that at the Transportation Advisory Committee, I will let this council know immediately. I just don't think it's, but thank you, Mr. Serna, for bringing that up. I just don't think there's any basis to that article. And lastly, you know, we've discussed this ordinance about foreclosed property. We've been discussing it for about two years. I think we had given it to the staff on more than one occasion. I was just wondering where we, it's not that difficult, an issue. I don't know why it's taking this long to come to some conclusion about it. But can you, Mr. McBrum, can you tell me where we are in those discussions?
We are trying to finalize an initial staff report with some recommendations, and our plan is to work that into the new city council study session work schedule that'll start in May.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has administrative council business? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I'd like to ask the chief police here about our 911 calls as far as the protocol and all, because there's been a lot of issues in the, in media and all about people being misdirected and guided towards safety concerns. You know, there was incident, I'm sure you're well aware of the gentleman who drove by an area, and he had, he had issues, and the 911 caller told him to go back to where the incident happened. Can you give me an update on what's going on in our city?
Can you repeat the question for me again, sir?
There's been issues as far as in the media about 911 calls and how the, how the 911, the person who's made the initial call and how that was conducted, and then they were told to go back to the scene where the incident happened. And then the guy went back there, and then, you know, then the person was murdered. So.
I'm not exactly sure what call you're talking about, sir, but I.
Well, as far as 911 calls here, I mean, you know, we've had our, our problems as well. I'm not sure how this relates, are trying to relate it to our 911 calls.
Sure.
What's the protocol for, if someone has an incident and, and they call 911 and say they're at 70th and 60th and pull back, how's that handled? Would, would anyone be told to go back to the scene where they were at, or just report it and?
It would just depend on the call. If the, depending on the type of call, they may need them to go back to the scene. Of course, our 911 call goes through our AdCom or Adams County Communications we pay a service fee to. And we do work with them periodically about what they do tell the callers. Of course, they dispatch for all the other agencies also, Brighton and Northland and the Fire Department. So we try and make it the same for all of us. But depending on the type of call, I mean, if it's a dangerous scene, we don't want them going back to it. You know, for example, if it was a large bar fight or something, you know, we're not going to tell them to go back there. We wouldn't want them to. If they did, I would sure hope to be notified so I could address the issue with AdCom.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mr. McAdamy?
Yes, you can. I just wanted to clarify that the incident that Councilman Douglas was referencing took place recently in Denver, so this wasn't a Commerce City event. This is the.
I was confused there for a second, but thank you, sir.
This is the event I assume that you're referring to is.
Yeah.
Took place this weekend, and there was an incident where a vehicle was being harassed by another vehicle, bottles thrown, et cetera. Ultimately, the dispatch in Denver told them to go back to Denver. Apparently, they had left the city limits. They were told to come back into the city limits, and upon coming back into the city limits, the original party that they were involved with actually shot into their vehicle, and someone was sent to the hospital.
Okay.
So I think, if I understand Mr. Douglas's question, it's, do we have protocols through AdCom that safeguard our citizens from being directed in a similar manner back into a dangerous situation? And it sounds like from your answer, the answer is typically, no way. Would we expect that to happen?
No, no, we would not. I mean, if somebody was going through that, we would either go to Denver to meet them, or, you know, if it's, if they ended down in Centennial Park, we may have them come back down to the city, but we'd have them meet at City Hall rather than go back to the city.
Some safe and neutral spot.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Just wanted to help clarify.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock.
Yes, and Mr. Douglas, you can get in touch with AdCom, and you can go and do a sit-in and sit and listen to calls that come in for any length of time over at AdCom. All you have to do is get in touch with the gentleman that is in charge of it and tell him who you are and that you would like to, what your concerns are, and you'd like to sit in and listen to calls. And it's very interesting, the calls that do come through AdCom. So that is something you could do, so you could further reassure yourself that they are handling our calls professionally.
Okay. Thanks.
And that would be Bill Malone's, the director over there, and I can coordinate that for you, sir.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further administrative council business to take up this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into the report portion of the meeting. Interim City Manager, McBrum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of brief items. This is my, of course, as you probably remember, this is my first day back from being gone last week, so a lot to catch up on. First and foremost, a big thank you to Greg Clements for filling in for me while I was out of town. Additionally, the entire leadership team will be out of the office this Thursday and Friday, working on the action items and goals that the city council discussed at its event last month. So we're eager to, to work together, to develop work plans, to accomplish the goals the city council has set for us, and expect to hear more about that after our efforts at the end of this week. And then finally, in the city manager's report that we sent out to you, I wanted to call your attention to an award notification. The city was the recipient of a gold award from Dr. Cog in their Local Government Award Program. The city will be recognized for its community outreach, public education campaign for the Mile High Greyhound Park at an evening event on May 2nd at the Colorado History Museum. We will be sending out more information as we hear about it. Unfortunately, if there's anything unfortunate about that, it's the same night as the NAOP Awards Dinner. So we'll have to figure out how to get enough folks at both events. But it's a, but it's a tremendous achievement, and a lot of credit goes to the communication staff and the community development staff that put that effort together.
Great. Thank you. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Attorney.
I have one item I'd like to review with the city council just briefly. The purpose is to clear up some confusion that I think has arisen on the city council with the, with this discretionary fund issue that comes up from time to time. And I haven't specifically reported on this item previously with this city council. I have given a short discussion with prior city councils on this same issue when it was first adopted. It's set forth in council policy number CP-19. And I just like to briefly, emphasize briefly, review the highlights of that council policy that you set forth. First of all, the expenditure of discretionary funds by the city council is for the limited purpose for attendance at city functions and activities, and only authorized if the function or activity is of benefit to the city, is in the public interest for the city, or serves a public purpose on behalf of the city. So that's the starting point. That's the purpose of the discretionary funds, not for any other purpose, like purchasing something or paying out expenses for something other than attendance at a city function or a function that's authorized by the city for attendance by city council members at the function. Now, once you pass that hurdle, then there's a question of how, how much funds we're talking about here. Each of you has a $1,500 fund for expenditure on a calendar year basis. And the first $100, we'll put it this way, if, if the item that you're talking about involves less than $100, then the city council member's on an honor system as to how or if that item qualifies for discretionary fund expenditure. So it's an honor system for the first $100. For $100 to $300, it needs to be approved by the city attorney's office before you incur the expenditure. If it's over $300, you need to bring it before the city council for approval. So even if it meets the criteria, if, if those numbers apply, then the process needs to be followed accordingly. So $100 and under, honor system. $100 to $300, city attorney's office. Over $300, city council needs to approve it. And once that happens, then, I'm sorry, I'm saying $300, it's $350. It's $100 to $350 for the city attorney's office. Over $350, city council needs to approve it. Then, once the money is expended, then within 30 days after the expenditure, you need to file a report. And that's important. You need to file the report to show that you have expended, or how much you have actually expended. And that report goes to the city manager's office. And if there's any question about the report, then the city manager's office needs to coordinate with my office, and we bring it back to you for appropriate review if there's an issue regarding the report. And that's it in a nutshell. It's, it's not really that complicated, but there has been some confusion. It probably has to do with, we haven't really explained it in real detail to, especially the new members of the city council, or reviewed it with the existing members of the city council. But that is the, the council policy, and that's, that's the set of rules regarding the expenditure of discretionary funds. If there are any questions, either now or later, I'm certainly available.
I have one. I think because we are a new city council, there's several members of this council that are new and are not accustomed to that policy, I would request that you send out the, that council policy.
Send a copy.
By, by electronic mail to all the members, so that we all know what, what we can and cannot use those discretionary funds for, and how they have to operate those discretionary funds. I'll do that. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Bob. Now, it's me. I would like to talk about my last week. Had a meeting with Chief Sonier, went to Rotary, meeting, I had a meeting with Deb Obermeyer of the Metro North Chamber, and then on Saturday, went to a retirement party for Carol McLennan and gave her a plaque on behalf of the city for all of her efforts with the walkability and the different programs that she helped instill through Tri-County Health. So is there anything that anybody would like to add? Mr. Moreno.
I just want to thank Councilman Benson and Councilwoman Carson for joining me on the council Habitat for Humanity Build Day. Councilwoman Carson was a little stressed, I guess, at the job site. They put her to insulating a crawl space, and I don't think she had that much of a good time. But really appreciate you coming to volunteer, because, you know, these are homes that are going to, to folks in our community, and I thought it was important that we volunteered. So thank you for, for doing that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I had a chance to stop by the senior focus group on Friday at the REC Center. It was really exciting to see our seniors taking an active role in what they want to see the REC Center offer in terms of programs for the coming year, and what things they wanted to do. I took a couple moments and spoke on behalf of the city council and maintain that we have a commitment to the seniors in this community, and that we want to make sure that they're taken care of, and if they had any recommendations for this city council, that they'd be sure to let us know about it. But that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Carson.
Well, first of all, Habitat does a wonderful service to citizens in our community, so thanks to them. It was hard work. It was a four-foot-high crawl space that needed insulated. And anybody close to 60 years old understands that when you crawl around for hours on your hands and knees, we don't recoup as quick as we did when we were 30. But I wanted to thank everybody who came out and attended the fundraiser for Cultural Council. It was the Vino and Van Gogh event. It was a great time was had by all. If you get on the website for, if you get on Facebook for Whimsy Paint and Sip, it's where we all went and did our painting. It was enjoyed so much by everyone that I'm sure that it's a fundraiser that we will do a few more times. And so as the word spreads, we will get more and more participants into this, and hopefully maybe then we can start putting our art throughout the city on show.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock, did you have something?
Yes, sir. I would like to thank Mr. Moreno, as was reported in the beginning with the coloring book. Mr. Moreno and myself, we started out at OSUP School, and it's one of the schools in the coloring book, and the students down there were just fantastic. And there were a couple of classes that were taking government at the time, and they actually were telling us what the mayor and different sections of government do in Commerce City, and these are second graders. And so we were very proud of them and very surprised by what they knew. And then Mr. Moreno, he went to DuPont for his second handout, and I went to Central for my second handout. And the students down there were just as enthusiastic as the ones at OSUP. So this week, we are going to be, and I think we're going to have more council participation for the ones at Canetan over in School District 27J on Friday. And you'll be so surprised how enthusiastic these second graders are going to get. And when you ask them, if you're in the class, who's going to win the contest for the drawing contest, you watch. Every hand will be raised, because all of them are winners.
Great. Is there anything further to come before this council this evening? Mr. Moreno.
I also just want to wish Councilwoman Elliott a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
29.
If there, if there be nothing further, we are adjourned.
And so as the word spreads, we will get more and more participants into this, and hopefully, maybe then we can start putting our art throughout the city on show.